June 7th afternoon session, the year being 2018, of course. This is the meeting of the Portland City Council. Carla, please call the roll.
Fish Saltzman.
Here.
You daily.
Fritz.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here, and Commissioner Fish is at a meeting, and I know he intends to join us later in the session. So first of all, I would like to, oh, I guess we need to do our usual greetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so that everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to speak briefly about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless it's stated otherwise. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and you would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. We want to thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Well, very good. Thank you for that, and our first item today is item number 615. Could you please read that, Carla?
Accept the 2018 Annual Report on Sister City Activities.
Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome our international delegation from Olsan, South Korea, and our international delegation from Kaohsiung, Taiwan. I've just come from hosting the annual Sister Cities and Royal Rosarians Rose Festival reception where we celebrated the fantastic work that you all do to promote Portland as an international city, and it's so exciting to have you here. Portland Sister City relationships connect us all at the cultural, educational, and economic level, and it makes our big planet seem much, much smaller when we share these relationships. I want to welcome the delegations that have been visiting from other sister cities, as I just mentioned, Olsan, South Korea, and Kaohsiung, Taiwan. You're our honored guests today, and we want to thank you and welcome you to the City Council chamber. I look forward to hearing your reports as part of the Sister City Annual Requirements. I also want to extend my sincere appreciation for the work that our Sister City program does to strengthen cultural awareness in international relationships. It's not lost on me or my colleagues here on the City Council that this is an important time in history, and fostering those cultural and educational and economic ties is probably as important today as it has ever been. And so I want to thank all of you, both individually and as part of larger delegations, for your commitment to those principles. So please welcome Office of Government Relations and International Relations Associate Sidney Odell. And Sidney, you're going to introduce the speakers and manage the run of show. Is that correct? Thank you. And just for the record, folks, as you speak about, these are very sensitive microphones, so about six to eight inches is fine, and then they'll adjust the volume as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Sidney Odell, and I'm the International Relations Associate in the Office of Government Relations.
Thank you.
As part of my work, I support Portland Sister Cities, a committed group of volunteers you can see behind me, who work together to put on an incredible variety of intercultural events throughout Portland that help us to better engage with our international community. Being for inviting my colleagues to speak, I would like to provide some background on the Sister City program. Portland Sister Cities are a member of Sister Cities International, a nonprofit organization that was initiated by the Eisenhower administration in 1956 to foster mutual friendship and understanding internationally. True to the spirit of Sister Cities International, Portland's nine sister cities and one friendship city help us to facilitate many cultural, educational, and economic exchanges. This year, we're happy to celebrate four Sister City anniversaries, and we've just come from the Sister City reception where we honored those guests. The Sister City Initiative has greatly enriched our local Portland community, and I urge you to work with them. Today, the leadership of Portland Sister City Associations are pleased to present their annual required reports on their efforts and activities undertaken in the 2017 calendar year. Thank you for taking the time to listen and accept this report. First up, I would like to introduce James Autry, who is the president of the Portland Ashkelon Sister City Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm James Autry, president of the Sister City Association with Ashkelon, Israel. We've been around for 31 years, a small Israeli city on the Mediterranean coast. We have Israeli beer factories there. We have the largest water desalination plant, and many, many creative entrepreneurs. Ashkelon's an ancient city. It's been around for 5,000 years, and it's right there on the coast, and it's also one of the 100 resilient cities with the Rockefeller Foundation. Our city is led by Mayor Itamar Shimonie, and it's like a bedroom community for the Jews and Arabs in the Silicon Forest, where Intel has a plant, as well as Microsoft and other inventors of all the different technologies and medical breakthroughs and environmental technologies that we are part of. We are working currently with different businesses in Portland and Israel to build relationships between those companies that are not yet connected in those three areas of medical, electronic, and environmental, and so we're beginning to pair them up. Our role here recently is to rebuild our leadership. We're planning a tour in February of 2019, and we are currently helping all the other Sister City Associations with creating a website, a Facebook page, and then coordinating and hosting our annual reception and grand floral parade. So this is our new website for Portland Sister Cities Coalition. It's just a group of folks working together. We have a page there highlighting our reception, our grand floral, their relationship with the city Royal Rosarians, as well as this is our Facebook page, so it's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm Philip Potestio, and I am president of the Portland Bologna Sister City Association. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and councilors, for inviting the Sister City Coalition to once again present this year. It's now been 15 years since the Portland Bologna Sister City Association was formed, and our formal relation with Bologna was cemented in 2004. In two weeks, we will be hosting a group of 16- and 17-year-olds from Bologna. Our youth exchange, now in its 11th year, uses host-travel reciprocal model that has benefited almost 200 students by allowing them to share their own city and discover a wonderful new one on alternating years. Since this is reciprocal, students from both cities have the opportunity to really get to know their host-guest-partner and their travel companions. This program is definitely on a positive trajectory. We now receive more applicants than we can handle. We are now able to provide scholarship, financial aid, to help students with need. Many of our fundraising efforts, and particularly our annual SAG-Ara, a great party by the way, are directly tied to this initiative. We have successfully instituted a documentation component to our program that has really allowed us to share in and track the impact of this experience. Last year, when our youth ambassadors returned to Portland, we were treated to films, collages, presentations, and even miniature oil paintings expressing what the trip meant to this fine group. We at Portland Bologna are blessed with a talented diligent board of directors as volunteers with full-time jobs. This group gives all it can to our cause. Through our dedication and skill set, we get a lot done on a minimal budget and with limited members. When there are, I'm sorry, when there is a special interest or area of expertise in a particular arena, say wine, we marshal our efforts and are quite productive. You may notice and perhaps be irked by the fact that I am once again presenting for the PBSCA. We are a bit strapped. We need board members and additional resources, particularly of the human sort, would allow us to expand our efforts and influences. I don't need to be president for life. When I think of our charge to deepen economic development with our sister city and its region, I'm a bit overwhelmed. It should not have to be generated by our borderline overworked board. I ask the city's help in direction, guidance, and resources. Inspiring trade between our cities and regions, for example, has gone greatly untapped. On our own, as it stands presently, we don't have the bandwidth to tackle these sorts of initiatives. We also appreciate through events like today's the opportunity for increased exposure to the city at large. Our Sister City Bologna and its region Amelia Romagna has just been named the number-one destination in Europe for 2018 by the Lonely Planet Travel Guides. We are hardly surprised, but nonetheless take pride in that fact. Bologna is a marvel, beautiful, vibrant, moderately medieval, forward-thinking with its ever-apparent tradition. Our group is planning a tour of the region focusing on food and wine, along with a visit to Piedmonte in October. Go to our website for information. Thank you.
Sounds fun. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Yvette Flores Schmid, and I'm the president of the Portland-Wajahara Sister City Association. This year, we're celebrating 35 years of friendship, and we are very happy, and we're going to honor planting a rose bed in July 6th. I hope that you can join us. Fighter-Fighter Academy, Bomberos Latinos International Academy, Portland Latino Fighter-Fighters. After over two years of planning between Portland Bomberos Latinos and the City of Wajahara Fire Departments, member of the Fire and Fire and Rescue, lead by PGICA board member Jose Troncoso, created a training school in Wajahara, where 40 Latin American fighter-fighters from the US, Mexico, and Guatemala participated in a week-long course involving the latest equipment and the lifesaving techniques. Recently, Bomberos students were also among the first responders to the September 19th Central Mexico earthquake, and played an important role in the initial relief effort. Steaming from the success of the inaugural training, PGICA will meet in October 2018 with Wajahara city officials to formalize the creation of the International Center for Training of Fighter-Fighters and Civil Protection in Wajahara. Wajahara Portland Sister City Association, GPSCA, board creation. In collaboration with the Director of International Relations for the City of Wajahara, a complementary board was established last October 2017 with the goal of furthering the mission of the association and elevating the sister city collaboration. Twenty new board members were selected from the Wajahara-based board to have a persistent presence in both of the cities of Wajahara and in Portland. The goal of our sister board would be to increase productivity and to expand our networks and resources within the city of Wajahara. Last February, we attend the Sister City International Summit held in Wajahara on February 15, 16, and 17. It offered the opportunity to strengthen the relationship between Mexico and the United States, as well as endorse the bonds of friendship and historically been woven between these two nations, which has been marked throughout history with the trace of migration, the bi-cultural and the commercial relations. The summit offered the opportunity to explore new forms of cooperation between the cities and countries to achieve specific and innovative projects that benefits our community. Also, I would like to thank Cheeto Del Wale, Sidney Odell, and James Autry for the invaluable support to our associations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Mike Bostwick, president of the Portland-Kaohsiung Sister City Association. For 2017 and 2018, we've had a very busy year, starting with having to find new locations to store our dragon boats and equipment. We found one last month, but we have to pay four times what we were paying before. In February, we supported the CCBA Chinese Language School at their Chinese New Year's Dinner Celebration, and agreed to have the CCBA administer our $1,500 scholarship again this year, which will be awarded this Sunday to a Chinese student in the area. In March, our trip to Kaohsiung with the Portland-Kaohsiung Sister City Board members, the Rose Festival Queen Michaela Kianti, and Royal Rosarian Prime Minister Adam Baker and his wife, the Selwood Jazz Band, and Cheeto Del Wale from the city of Portland. Twenty-eight delegates in all were, was very successful. We're presenting Kaohsiung with a glass trophy and a rose planting, celebrating our 30 years of sister city relationships and friendship. Some of the delegations stayed a little longer and went to the Taiwanese Opera Company and got into the spirit and costumes. We hope to invite the company to Portland in the future. Our visit to Shuda was short this year, but exciting. As usual, 7,000 students are out greeting us as we come into the school. And during the visit, the Portland Rose Festival Association, the Royal Rosarians, and the Portland-Kaohsiung Sister City Association each presented Shuda students with two $500 scholarships to help the students with their trip to Portland to enhance our Rose Festival celebration with their continued presence. The eye-doubting ceremony on March 31st went very well, and as lots of people say, we know that spring and the Rose Festival is just around the corner when they see the dragon boats on the river. We are ready for our annual Rose Festival Dragon Boat Race this year, this weekend, June 9th and 10th. We hope to see all of you there. And there's 101,600 individual participants with 250 volunteers. Each team has four races or more if they win. Plus, we have special events again, the Susan B. Coleman Race, where cancer survivors fill the boats for their race, the Shuda High School Friendship Race, and again, we have the University Chalons, where three universities will be rowing against each other. The dragon boats are symbolic of our continued commitment to the relationship between Portland and Kaohsiung to promote the friendship through cultural exchange. We had a float in the Starlight Parade. One of our older boats is decorated with lights, and each year, we choose a different team to be on the boat. We are hosting 62-person delegation from Kaohsiung, the delegation composed from city government and students and staff from Shuda High School. We met with the mayor this morning. We walked to Pioneer Square to show them the Portland front room, and then they were at the mayor's reception. Kaohsiung delegation will be attending the Rosarian knighting ceremony tomorrow, where Director General Chin will be knighted. Saturday, members of the delegation will be in the ground floor parade with the PKSCA float and the Shuda band and dance team. Shuda High School students again are hosted by local families with which great cultural exchange between both. The Shuda High School and David Douglas are sister schools in our two cities, and this year, we're hoping to re-initiate a greater connection between Portland State University and the Sunyet Sen University in Kaohsiung. We have a meeting tomorrow with the president of Portland State so that the delegation can re-initiate better communications and more exchange of students and teachers. And for the remainder of the summer, we're looking to make more contacts with the local companies and connect with Kaohsiung and Taiwan. I'd also like to thank the following companies: Alaska Airlines, Daimler, 7-Eleven, Stewart-Sokol Larkin, US Bank, Bank Industries, Washman, Northwest Design and Construction, Banner Bank, and Precision Plumbing, and the Portland Rose Festival for supporting the Portland-Kaohsiung Dragon Boat Races. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name's Alan Ellis. I'm president of the Portland-Habado Sister City Association. We're celebrating our 30th anniversary of the partnership. Habado's located just north of Manchurian China. It is a city where two rivers come together. It's an inland port, a lot in common with Portland. It was begun back in the Gorbachev-Glossnost period, and some prominent Portlanders were instrumental in getting it started. PSU Business Professor Dr. Earl Molander, Mayor Bud Clark, Commissioner Mike Lindberg, and subsequently later down the line, Commissioner Gretchen Cifory, all of whom traveled there as goodwill ambassadors and had a great time. A delegation, Sister City delegation, just came back from Habado's last week. They attended the Day of the City Festival, which is the equivalent of the Rose Festival here, and they, one of the activities that goes on during their Rose Festival, or their Day of the City Festival, is an international children's art exhibit. And this year, Portland was represented by the artwork from 5th graders at Kelly School. These 5th graders are in the Russian language immersion program, and they did a great job. You can see a couple examples in the photos. Their teacher, Aliona Gregerson, not only got the kids motivated, but they got the families involved, the community. The theme was peace and friendship among the children of the world. Not only was the artwork sent, but also a letter of friendship. The kids felt that the key to peace and friendship internationally is kindness, and that was their theme. Aliona Gregerson, the teacher, and I will be representing Habado's in the grand floral parade tomorrow. Mayor Alexander Sokolov of Habado's wanted to be here today with the delegation. It didn't work out. There have been some diplomatic complications, as you might imagine, but he did send a couple beautiful framed photographs, which I hope you'll find a prominent place in City Hall for. One of a park, they have beautiful parks, it's like Portland, and one of the Cliff Cafe, Cliff Museum, which overlooks the Amur River. He also sent a personal letter to Mayor Wheeler and to the city government, and as well as myself and the Sister City Association. And an excerpt from the one that I got says, "During these 30 years of Portland-Habado Sister City Association, the Sister City Association has always played a pivotal role in the development of relations between our cities. We are particularly appreciative of the fruitful work of your members in the realization of numerous joint projects, among which are the successful initiative to enhance this region's water purification and garbage recycling systems, as well as the initiation of travel exchange programs in the areas of education and music." And that water purification program, we had the head of the Water Bureau go over there several years ago, and as a result, one of our delegates said that he could actually drink the water from the tap, which is quite an achievement. In closing, we have ongoing projects. Franklin High School is linked up with Gymnasium Number Five in Habado's. Franklin High School Group going over there at the end of this month to Habado's, and the Gymnasium Number Five coming here in September. We are continuing our music exchange program. We've had a jazz-blues group, we've had a rock group, and now we're sending over a bluegrass group from Portland Scratch Dog String Band. We were able to get a $15,000 grant from the State Department to send them as goodwill and ambassadors. We also celebrate two national holidays in Russia. One is the International Women's Day, which is a national, you know, they they have a day off from work. It's a national holiday in the country. We celebrate at a Kachka Restaurant. We also celebrate Victory Day, the feet of Hitler, where 20 million Soviet citizens died. We had that at Fifth Avenue Cinema in coordination with PSU. And finally, in November 4th, we're going to have our 30-year anniversary gala, Bridge to Russia, at the Old Church, where Scratch Dog String Band, the bluegrass band, is going to be coming back and performing for us, as well as some local Russian musicians. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler and commissioners, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Sarah Wright. I'm with the Portland Mutari Sister City Association. And Portland, I'm sorry, Mutari is in Zimbabwe, which is on the southeast side of Africa. And the Portland Mutari Sister City has evolved much over the years since its inception in 1991. We are most where we are very humanitarian in nature and addressing the needs in Mutari is they are great. What started out as a response to apartheid in 1991 changed over time to address the HIV and AIDS crisis. Portland Mutari has fundraised to help build a clinic, a women's wedding shelter, and support several schools and orphans as well. Today, we still help support health and education, and we've always really been about those person-to-person connections and fostering those friendships to help support peace and growth between our two cities. This last year, our small all-volunteer group has been working on a new strategic plan and fundraising for a needs assessment in Mutari for a trip in 2019. One of our main sustainable projects are buying panels, art panels, from the Family AIDS Support Organization, or FASO, and these art panels are sold by women affected by HIV and AIDS in Mutari. We buy those panels, we sell them here, and then we also help to invest in educational and health projects in Mutari. So this year, we've displayed and sold these panels at several different places, including the African Film Festival, the May Linda Marumba Concert, and we'll be at this year's Zim Fest in Monmouth over the summer. And so we've helped support school and also this year with some needed supplies. We're also holding our annual Bull-a-thon, another fundraiser near Halloween on October 27th, and prizes will be given out for costumes, so we'd love to see all of you there to help support our causes and to help us grow. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a question. I'm interested that there's a Zim Fest in Monmouth.
Yes.
Do you know what the connection with that community is?
It's through the college there, so the Western Oregon, and it's just one of the spaces that they were able to get. It's held it was held there every year, and then it's it's been every other year now. So it's now it's being held this year. So I'll let you know the dates.
My son went to Western Oregon, so it's certainly a beautiful place to have it.
Exactly.
It's just not one that I would necessarily connect with Zimbabwe.
Yeah, I think it was just the price was good.
I'm sure it will be very enjoyable. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Wheeler and commissioners, my name is Michael Bacon, and as the president of Portland Sapporo Sister Association, Sister City Association, I am both honored and humbled to provide you our brief annual report. As I am sure most of you know, the sister-city relationship between Sapporo, Japan, and Portland is one of the longest-standing sister-city relationships in the U.S., beginning in 1959, and continuing with regular, plentiful, and meaningful exchanges that have built an incredibly strong bond of friendship between our two cities. Both Portland and Sapporo share common reputations as being highly livable and vibrant cities that attract many visitors and new citizens every year. Clean water, abundant local produce and beer, a strong culinary culture, great access to the outdoors, beautiful gardens and parks, and mass transit are among the many shared aspects of our two cities resulting in this recognition. We are excited to be celebrating our 60th anniversary next year, and to that end, are kicking off our celebration efforts starting this summer on Saturday, July 14th, with a Sapporo night at the beautiful Portland Japanese Garden, a treasure of Portland and the world that was inspired and built upon the developing relationship of Portland and Sapporo. This event will feature Japanese cuisine by Chef Naoko, who incorporates local ingredients here in the northwest into traditional Japanese dishes, and sake from northern Japan, selected and introduced by sake samurai, a title bestowed upon only 50 or so people in the world by the Japanese government, Marcus Pakizer, who is the vice president of the sake category for Young's Market Northwest here in Portland. We would be honored to have Mayor Wheeler and Portland commissioners attend this amazing event. Tickets are on sale. The there is a special invitation. The new mayor of Sapporo, Mayor Akimoto, visited last year, and the vice mayor will be visiting this July to collaborate with the mayor's office, Japanese consul general, and the PSSCA to begin preparations for 60th anniversary exchanges and celebrations. We expect Mayor Akimoto to arrive in June 2019 with a large citizen and city commissioner delegation, similar to the ones we've seen from our other sister cities this year. As part of that visit, we are pleased to announce the movement and rededication of the large Japanese bell gifted to the city of Portland from Sapporo to commemorate the 30th anniversary and placed in front of the Oregon Convention Center. You can see it here in the slide. With the addition of the new convention hotel by Hyatt Regency and the renovation of the Convention Center, the Oregon Convention Center plans to move this important symbol of the relationship between Sapporo and Portland to the southeast corner of the Convention Center grounds. Initially, our board expressed concerns, but the OCC and their architecture team in collaboration with the Japanese gardens and our association worked to turn this move into a great opportunity to rethink how the bell is situated, signed, and rededicated to represent the past, present, and future of our ongoing connections to our good friends across the Pacific Ocean. As you will see in this draft drawing, whoops, if you go back, the proposal includes incorporating both totem poles from the indigenous Ainu of Hokkaido and those of our local community, trees native of Japan, and a new platform base made in the same style as the most recently completed ancient Japanese stone walls featured in the Portland Japanese gardens crafted by the 13th-generation castle wall builders from Japan. The Oregon Convention Center and the Japanese gardens are working to have this stonework be the demonstration site for the International Stone Artisans Conference to be held at the Oregon Convention Center next May or June.
Smart.
The bell will also become more accessible to the public to be rung on momentous occasions promoting peace. Both Sapporo and Portland recognize that investment in our youth is critical to the longevity of our relationship and, of course, the prosperity and vibrance of our cities. Over the past seven years, we have established annual youth exchanges that leverage a partnership with the Japanese immersion program in Portland Public Schools to send a delegation of advanced-level speakers and writers of the Japanese language from Grant High School to Sapporo for an intensive summer institute. The themes of the Sapporo Institute Summer Institute are to be humble, to endure, and to respect. This past summer, we sent 15 students to Sapporo, and this summer, we are sending 18, including my own son. In turn, each spring and March, Sapporo sends a delegation of two representatives from each of their eight high schools to Portland to spend a week living and going to school in Portland. Meeting our mayor and commissioners is always a highlight of their visit. We also sent our 21st first-year snow sculpture team from to Sapporo to compete in the annual Sapporo Snow Festival. Gratitude to our corporate sponsors, Columbia Sportswear and Taiheiyo Cement, as well as many individual sponsors. Thanks for allowing me to highlight some of the endeavors of our association as we join you in continuing to build Portland as a livable and vibrant city. I would like to recognize the incredible efforts of my fellow board members and our partners in Sapporo. The relationship thrives because of the talents, hard work, and dedication of many.
I have a question for you, and that is, why does the bell say that it can ring without warning?
That's a very interesting question. The bells over there, we didn't know this, I didn't know this until just this last year, that they've actually, there was a composer who actually put together a syncing of the three bells. So there is the ones from Taiwan, and there's the one from Korea, and then one from Japan. And supposedly, those are set up in some synchronized way, and they ring, and they're automated, and it's done that way. They're going, they've recommissioned the composer to set that sequence or whatever it is to, and I honestly, I haven't talked to the composer, so I don't know exactly what the actual sort of nature of the composition is, but so that's going to, they're going to ring automatically. We, as a part of this negotiation, asked for it to be, because it was originally intended to be a bell where people, when they were feeling like they wanted to celebrate or mark a momentous occasion, or probably in in terms of trying to in sorrow or in grief about expressing those feelings of peace or asking for peace, to make it a little more accessible. So it won't be behind two gate or two fences now, which it is right now, and as it moves, it'll be more open.
Thank you. Does that help? I've been wondering about that sign for decades, so thank you very much.
I didn't, yeah.
Thank you. It's very interesting.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Bob Fraser, president of the Portland Sujo Sister City Association. We're having a lot of fun this year celebrating our 30th anniversary. This is a pictorial presentation because my board members just love to take photos. So but this this pictorial presentation will be with words. So Suzhou, founded in 514 B.C., a little older than Portland, is known as the Venice of Asia with its beautiful canals and gardens, and only 20 minutes by high-speed train to Shanghai. One of the programs that really touched my heart was the children at Chinese Hope Charter School last year, who had great fun with a contest entitled Painting Your Home and Dreaming Your Future, hosted by the Suzhou Province Jangsu Broadcasting Company. And they actually won first, second, and third prize. And while I was in China last year, I had the opportunity to receive the award on their behalf in Nanjing. Hosford Middle School, one of nine Portland-area sister-city schools, takes up the entire assembly in welcoming the students from their sister-city school of Lita, Suzhou. The Suzhou Urban Planning Department visited with Portland's planning and also Restoration and Historic Preservation Department at mayor's office this past May. This delegation, coming and going, could not exist without the support of a strong Portland international relations office. And we wish to thank Cheeto Dillaway and Sydney Odell for their absolutely tremendous support. Thank you so very much. April 22 to 27, PSSCA hosted a mayoral delegation to Suzhou on the occasion of our 30th anniversary, with Mayor Wheeler and 30 delegates representing business, development, culture, and trade. The trip began with the began that week with an exhibit of 20 paintings by PSSCA board member and artist Francis Lee depicting our beautiful Portland area of our so many natural wonders. The delegation could not visit Suzhou without visiting a number of the UNESCO World Heritage Gardens. Portland Art Museums Brian Fariso and Mary Grayville came to Suzhou with us to discuss an MOU with the Suzhou Museum as a possible sister-city partner. Mayor Wheeler met with Suzhou Mayor Li Yaping, reaffirming our longstanding sister relationship, honoring our 30th anniversary. Mayor Wheeler and delegation visited the Singapore Suzhou Industrial Park, a base for many international 500 fortune companies, which was most impressive. Jeff Miller and Jeff Hammerly with Travel Portland hosted a luncheon and seminar for 40 Suzhou travel professionals on our world-class destination of Portland. Kristen Leonard, chief affairs officer, represented Portland at our delegation visit with the delegation of the Port of Taishan. Lisa James with the Lansu Chinese Garden represented Portland at our visit with the Suzhou Development Company, which built our garden. Interview of Mayor Wheeler sharing with Suzhou Television, Print, and Media that he felt very much at home in Suzhou, visiting another city with so many beautiful gardens and beautiful environment. A tree planting ceremony with both mayors honoring our 30th anniversary of the sister city. David Kojo-Hockum, curriculum specialist of the Mandarin Immersion Program, and Japanese, Spanish, as well as Russian and Vietnamese. While in Suzhou, his students engage in field studies, homestays, produce bilingual videos, documentary of their experiences.
Bob, can I stop? This was the most amazing table I've ever seen. That's water.
Wasn't that amazing?
In the middle of the table.
That was absolutely incredible.
It was the most fascinating table, and it was had water, and then it had flowers sort of floating around in the middle of it. It was extraordinary. Sorry to interrupt, but I just had to point that out to my colleagues.
Suzhou is known as a water city.
Yes.
Our business breakfast seminar organized by Business Oregon's Global Trade Specialist Sunan Setborn and our Suzhou business partner Catherine Zhao with Eco KMC on Oregon's green technologies. We also wish to thank Elizabeth Edwards and Jennifer Arguzani from the mayor's office for their fine assistance on this delegation visit to Suzhou. And I must also thank Lynn McIntyre, our immediate past president, who's sitting back there somewhere. Raise your hand. Yes. Who really who really set this program to foot last year during our delegation visit, so this could not have happened without her help. Lastly, I invite everyone to join us and the mayor in celebration of our 30th anniversary at the Lansu Chinese Garden Saturday evening, July 28. And thank you so much for this opportunity to present.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Jane Mock, and I'm president of the Portland Ulsan Sister City Association. Today, we have five delegates from Ulsan, and they are here representing the trade and international relations, as well as the Greenery and Parks Division. Their visit here is after we've sent a delegation of five to Ulsan to celebrate their 12th Annual Rose Festival, which they fashioned after us. And we went there, and we were able to be in one big row and hit a button, and we started their festival, and it was really fun. We also were able to visit their city hall, and we were able to see both of those divisions, where they work, and also meet the counterparts that we have here with Portland Parks and Recreation. While we were there, we were able to visit SK Energy, their petrochemical plant, and it's the fourth-largest in the world. It was very interesting. We couldn't take any pictures. But we were very well-informed about how they are doing in all of Korea, but also globally. We were able to visit the Ulsan City Museum, where the petroglyphs are replicated inside the museum. And what we are working on now is Dr. Shin, their director, is working on an MOU with Portland Art Museum for our 35th anniversary in 2020, so that a Three Kingdoms exhibit will come to Portland Art Museum for extended stay, and then our majestic Native Art exhibit can be displayed at Ulsan for their city. Today, their visit here is to really work with the Portland Parks and Recreation and their Greenery Division. We're focusing on the International Test Garden and HOIT, and we are actually working, they brought people here that are species, tree, and flora specialists, research, and also their urban landscape specialist is with us. And they are looking for how we could get seeds from Ulsan to come so we can propagate the Korean forest collection that we've started in HOIT. So that's one of our main things this trip. So we have a great relationship with the International Trade and Relations Division and the Greenery, and we're looking also to continue the relationship we have with the Port of Portland. We visited Dr. Kim's, Jinwon Kim's office. He calls it his Oregon cabin, and we went there with our Royal Rosarian Kathy Fassinal and her husband, and we're able to say thank you to him on behalf of City of Portland and Portland Ulsan Sister City Association for that relationship in Korea for our Port of Portland. So we thank you for your support of the sister cities associations, and we thank you for today. It was a really good celebration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. My name is Rindert Schutten, and I'm the president of the Portland Utrecht Network. Apparently, we're not family yet. We're just friends, but good friends. So the Dutch community, apart from meeting every month and having a beer, we have two yearly events. So every year, Sinterklaas, which is actually a Turkish bishop living in Spain, he takes a boat to the Netherlands to bring presents to the Dutch children. So did you know that Sinterklaas, although he's very busy at that time of year, also comes to Portland? Well, he does, every year on December 5. The second annual event is our King's Day Celebration in late April at Oaks Park. Wearing orange, eating Dutch foods, and playing traditional children's games have made Koningsdag an increasingly popular event. In fact, more and more non-Dutch people actually show up for a party as well. This April, we had over 500 people attending. So in previous years, we have focused on economic collaborations, resulting in collaborative beer brewing, always good, and import-export of locally-made goods. For 2018, our focus is on cultural exchanges between the two cities. For 2018, our focus is on cultural exchanges between the two cities. The first initiative is called, and you can see here, hout, which is the Dutch word for wood. Wood. Three Utrecht artists ship locally-grown wooden blocks to three Portland artists and vice-versa. Then, the artists create their art objects from these wooden blocks, and later in the year, the artworks will be shown on exhibit here, both in Portland as well as in Utrecht. Here we see, next slide, please. Yes. Here we see L&amp;M.C. from All Our Design. This is a local Portland wooden metal design studio, trying to figure out what to do with their block of wood that it just recently received from the city of Utrecht. Our biggest project, however, for the year is the, what we call Bringing the Style to Portland project. The Style is a global art movement that started 100 years ago in the Netherlands, and the Utrecht artists played a key role in that. You may not know the art movement or the artists listed here, but you probably recognize the style, the imagery, the primary colors, et cetera. Not only will you find this art in world-renowned museums, including the Portland Art Museum, but you will find its influence in the architecture, furniture, and fashion all over the world. Specifically, contemporary Dutch design has deep roots in this art movement, the style. So last year, the Netherlands celebrated the style with special exhibitions all over the country. Even the Kukeenhof, the famous tulip garden, had a special de-style flower bed, as you can see in the lower right-hand corner. So we are working closely with the Portland Art Museum, the Studio Theatre at Lincoln Hall, the PSU, and a local theatre company called Hand to Mouse, as well as the Pacific Northwest Colors of Art, to create a series of events that share with Portland the cultural treasure of the style. For these events, we are bringing a Utrecht art historian, an amazing actress, who actually will perform a show, both in English as well as in Dutch, here in Portland, and a graphic artist to Portland. It's all happening mid-October, so check our website and register to stay informed. So we've been very fortunate that we have received generous grants from the city of Utrecht and the Dutch government to make this all happen. And we are currently working closely with Iraq as well for additional funding, because, you know, stuff like this takes money, as you know. But yes, you can help, and we actually have a wonderful thing that you can buy, How Portland, amazing jar, but with a mandarin top, handmade here in Portland, that you can buy if you go to our website.
Fabulous.
And if you do that, you also get one of these buttons that we'll throw that in for free for you, so you can also be in style. So finally, yes, in October, we will have cake, and we will party definitely in style. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, and thank you for those great presentations. Colleagues, I don't know if you have any further questions, and if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
No move?
Second.
Commissioner Saltzman moves the report. Commissioner Fritz seconds the report. Carla, please call the roll.
Saltzman.
Well, thank you, as always, for bringing us the good news about what's going on in our sister cities across the globe. It's always very impressive, the work you're doing and the work going on in all of our sister cities. So very happy to be here. Hi.
You, Daly.
Thank you. This is always a fun day of the year when we receive your sister cities report. I may be headed to Italy this summer to visit my ancestral home. Perhaps I'll swing by Bologna. Aye.
Fritz.
This is very refreshing, especially in these times, to hear a friendship and people working together and looking to find commonalities where there are always going to be differences. I was particularly moved by the Kuala Lumpur report, and, you know, knowing how much turmoil is going on, and yet you're still working to create those friendships, and I appreciate that very much. As somebody, we don't have an English sister city, nor do I have the energy to start one. And it's interesting to know the history of some of the relationships. The oldest one is nearly as old as me, so I'll be very interested to see next year what the 60th anniversary does. But I do remember that it was Jim Francesconi who started, who was most influential in getting the Bologna relationship going. But each one of them has a special place in your hearts, a special place in our hearts. And I know that we have over 80 different immigrant refugee communities here in Portland, and wouldn't it be lovely if each one of them had a sister-city relationship that we can just keep growing this? So I don't know what it takes to get from Utrecht to being a friend rather than a relative, but whatever it is, I hope that it continues to happen. Aye.
Wheeler.
Well, this is always a very informative presentation, as well as just being a lot of fun. And as I said right up front, these relationships are very, very important to the city of Portland, and we appreciate all of those who are committed to maintaining these relationships, both in the cities themselves and the delegations that take the time to come here and share with us, as well as paving the way for the youth of our city to be able to exchange with the youth of our sister cities, to foster understanding and appreciation for each other. I want to thank you personally for your commitment. I'd also like to thank our city staff. Sidney, thank you for helping to organize this. Cheeto, thank you for your continued leadership, and thanks to all of you who have engaged in this exercise. We're delighted to have you here at this very, very important time of year for our city. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Thank you. Cheeto, did we want to do a photo, or they photod out for the day? Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all so much for being here. We'll wait just a minute.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Remind me what's 608?
That was the BLT. We have to reset the BLT.
Okay.
It's just going to give the [inaudible]. Yes, that's his move to second. Michelle, I just want to confirm 608 is moving to secondary reading.
Yes?
608 is not emergency, so it's just going to move to second, right?
Oh, we...
Okay, so we're going to hear it. If there's any test, we'll take a test. We move to second. Well, it's what it shows.
It's an non-emergency. Yeah. And we're going to put a sign up. I have a sign up sheet out there. Okay.
Tom is going to do a presentation. Yes. He's going to do [inaudible].
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
All right. Very good. The next item is one that we carried over from yesterday, item 608 from yesterday. Could you read that? Carla, please.
Amend the business license law to increase the tax rate and increase the owner's compensation deduction.
Thank you for being here yesterday, and again, I want to apologize, Thomas, for the cross-communications and having you be here for a presentation that didn't take place. So I want you to hear my personal apology for that. I'm not really sure what happened, but I don't like to waste anybody's time, yours in particular. Thank you for being here today.
And thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Thomas Lanham. I'm the director of the Revenue Division, and I'm just shocked that nobody wanted to listen to the tax presentation. Everybody left. So I'll keep this very brief. The ordinance before you today raises the business license tax rate from the current 2.2% to 2.6% effective for tax year 2018, which is due in April of 2019 for most taxpayers. It also raises the owner's compensation deduction from the current $103,500 to $125,000 effective also for tax year 2018. Of 47,000 businesses that currently pay the business license tax, we have 105,000 businesses that are in business in Portland, but 47,000 of them actually end up paying our tax. 1,700 will pay less. These are predominantly the smaller businesses that I think the council's desires to shield from this tax increase. 16,000 will pay the same, so typically the $100 minimum, and $29,000 will pay more. This change is in accordance with your fiscal year 2018/19 budget, which you'll hear a little later this afternoon. And the increased rate is expected to generate about $10 million for fiscal year 18/19 and 15.3 ongoing, and there are no increases to the administrative expenses for this change. And I'll stop there.
Very good. Thank you, Thomas. Colleagues, any further questions? This particular issue. Commissioner Saltzman.
So, Thomas, you mentioned in your statement something about protecting smaller businesses from the increase. What are we protecting?
Well, simply, the increase in the owner's compensation deduction typically will help smaller businesses.
Oh, so you were, that's what you were...
That small subset. The majority of businesses certainly will see an increase, but there are 1,700...
Everybody's paying the same tax rate.
Right.
Right, okay.
There are some that would actually pay less despite the increased rate, and those are typically smaller businesses.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
Very good. Is there any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. Colleagues, I'd just like to read a statement into the record prior to moving this to the second. It's not related specifically to this ordinance, but it's probably the most logical place for me to read this into the record. "In my proposed budget, I announced that I would be seeking to increase the business license tax, and unlike in past years, I would be doing this in partnership with the business community as they step forward to help us achieve shared citywide goals. In the spirit of partnership, and because continued economic growth benefits from a stable tax environment, I had proposed a budget note that expressed my goal of avoiding further BLT increases for the next 10 years, and articulated my intent to present a proposed budget in future years if the tax environment in Portland changes significantly. While I thoroughly respect my colleague's decision to strike that budget note, I'm taking this opportunity to state on the record that my personal commitment to the content of the budget note remains unchanged." Thank you all. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you. Colleagues, Commissioner Fish would like to participate in the vote, and he will be here at 3:15. Is there any objection if we take a 15-minute recess? Very good. We are in recess till 3:15. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.[1338.74]
For the record, Carla, could you please read items 616 through 621?
616, conduct a proposed use hearing on state shared revenue. 617 certify that certain services are provided by the city to establish eligibility for state shared revenues. 618 approve accepting funds from the state of Oregon under state revenue sharing program for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019. 619 create and rename various funds and update the fund statements of purpose for various funds. 620 adopt the annual budget of the city and establish appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019. And 621 approve levying taxes for the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019.
Very good. Director Scott?
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Andrew Scott, Director of the City Budget Office, and I'm joined by Claudio Campesano, Assistant Director. Good afternoon. We're here to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2018-19 today. As usual, there are a number of procedural steps we need to go through. We are also going to just briefly, once we get to the adopted budget ordinance, show you the new adopted budget dashboard that we're putting on Portland's online website, portlandoregon.gov website, that gives a little bit better access to some of the information. So we're excited to show you that as well. So Mayor, we start off with a proposed use hearing on state shared revenue, and there's a statement that you can read in the record.
Very good. This hearing is being held by the City Council of Portland, Oregon in compliance with the provisions of the state revenue sharing regulations, ORS 221.770. It is to allow citizens to comment on the proposed use of these funds in conjunction with the annual budget process. As proposed for council adoption, the fiscal year 2018-19 budget anticipates receipts totaling $20,31,436 from state revenue sharing under ORS 221.770. As has been the case in prior years, it is proposed that this revenue be allocated in equal parts to support fire prevention and police patrol services. Is there anyone here today who wishes to be heard on this subject?
No one signed up.
Very good. I'm now closing this hearing to discuss the proposed uses of state revenue sharing.
Great. Thank you. So after that hearing, we now go on. Council considers a resolution to certify that the city meets eligibility requirements for state shared revenue, and state law requires that we provide a number of services as a municipal government. This resolution certifies that we do so.
Very good. So we take a vote on the resolution?
Yes, we do.
Do we take testimony on the resolution?
Yes, I believe.
Is there any public testimony on this resolution?
I didn't have a sign-up sheet. Sorry for that one.
Is there anybody here who would like to testify on this resolution? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The resolution's adopted.
Great. And so now the third and final step in receiving our state shared revenue is to consider an ordinance that accepts the state shared revenue. After holding our hearing and certifying we're qualified, we now just need to accept it.
Very good. Is there any further discussion on this item? Is there any public testimony? Seeing none, call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, it's good that we do get some shared revenue from the state, even though Portland gives to the rest of the state more than we get back. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted.
Great. Thank you. So the next stage, this is an ordinance that creates and renames various funds and updates the fund statement of purpose for various funds. So within the city, we budget in a number of different types of funds, and again, under local budget law, we need to, council needs to take action to create or rename those. This particular ordinance this year approves the following fund closures and creations. It creates the Cannabis Licensing Special Revenue Fund, which will allow for more transparent tracking of cannabis licensing fees and penalties in relation to program costs, allow for multi-year management of the resources by the fund manager, and facilitate the overall management of the program. The ordinance also renames the Recreational Marijuana Tax Fund to the Recreational Cannabis Tax Fund. And finally, it adopts and makes changes to the fund's statement of purpose for these two funds and several OMF funds to reflect a reorganization of the Bureau of Internal Business Services. In addition, Comprehensive Financial Management Policy 2.04 states that each fund shall have a statement of purpose. This ordinance updates those statements for a variety of funds.
Very good. Is there any further discussion on this? Is anyone signed up to testify on item 619?
I did have a sign-up sheet for this one.
Anybody want to testify on 619? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted.
Great. Thank you. All right, now we are to the actual heart of the adopted budget process. So the next ordinance you have in front of you will adopt the 2018-19 budget. I'm going to walk through in just a few minutes, changes to the adopted budget, I'm sorry, changes to the approved budget that have been filed now as the adopted budget. In addition, we can take any amendments at this time as well, and as with the approved budget process, any amendment needs to be moved and seconded for consideration and discussion, and then there will be public testimony and we will adopt the budget. However, I want to take just four or five minutes to walk you through a dashboard that we have created with this adopted budget information that is intended to make it much more easily accessible for the public to understand what's in our budget, to be able to drill down a little bit into specific budgets. You may or may not know, if you haven't picked one up recently, the printed budget document is about 600 pages. That's just volume one. There's also volume two and volume three still? No, we eliminated volume three, which is good. But not surprisingly, very few people ever pick up the printed adopted budget. We print 15 or 20 of them every year, and we give them away for free, and even if free, we can't get rid of them. So most people do access the budget online. However, accessing a 600-page document online is somewhat challenging as well. So we've been looking for ways to create new and better tools that people can access that information, and Aaron is here to just walk you quickly through that dashboard, which I think you all have on your screens in front of you. Yes, great.
All right. Aaron Kaufman, City Budget Office. We are excited to show you our new interactive adopted budget dashboard, which is now available on the City Budget Office's website. We built this dashboard as a learning tool for city staff and the community in hopes of greater transparency and accountability. We are also inspired to build a tool like this in part because of What Works Cities and PDX Process Improvement, which we spoke to you about yesterday. The dashboard begins with an overview of the budget process and ends with program-level budget details. We'll give you a brief, two-minute demo of the product today. So first, how is the city budget developed? You can hover your mouse over these different steps and learn more about the budget process, including budget monitoring. When is the city budget developed? This is an interactive timeline, and you can see today's date down here, and actually, today, June 7, council action to adopt the budget. Just going down a little bit more, we wanted to explain the difference between general fund and non-general fund, so you can hover over and see which bureaus interact with the general fund and non-general fund based on percentage. Get a little more information about it there. Going forward, you can see all the bureaus by service area, and you can also hover over there and just see a little bit more information about what bureaus fall under what service area, and you can also filter by fund if you want by clicking on this up here.
Aaron, could you actually show them that real quick? If you, that's all funds right now, if you switch it to general fund.
Yeah, we can see the public safety is higher, and then non-general fund down here, public utilities is the highest.
Do we have to draw so much attention on the public utility? Can we shrink that one a little bit and maybe?
And going forward, this says, you might recognize this, this is based on the mayor's proposed budget dashboard that we released about a month ago. This is updated with the adopted budget information, and it's by mayor's priorities, and you can actually click on the priority here, increasing housing options and reducing homelessness, and see what decision packages are going to that priority area. You can also select by bureau too, to see which bureau, like the Housing Bureau, for instance, you can see all their decision packages going to that particular category. Moving down, what are the city's revenue sources? You can see the different revenue sources, taxes, service charges, beginning fund balance, things like that. You can also check by bureau, and again, going to Housing Bureau, we see, you know, let's go to Fire and Rescue, you can see general fund discretionary is most of their resources, and you can hover over to see a little bit more about where they're getting their revenue. Next one is city's expenditures. It's the same as above, but on the expense side. You can also go by bureau as well, and fund type, you can sort that way. And lastly, this is the, I think, the best part of the dashboard, where you can see program-level budgeting, and it's by bureau, you can't do the whole city because it would get a little messy, so we have it by bureau, and for Portland Housing Bureau, for example, their biggest expense is on affordable housing and homeless services, and you can hover over to see what those actual programs are. And historical budget trends, and then also staffing levels. You can see those patterns as well. And that's the dashboard.
Can you go up to the top for a second? Andrew, under the number one, how is the budget developed? First of all, this is superb and easy to read, and so kudos to everybody who worked on it. You know, one thing that a member of the community may be most motivated to learn about is, in this, what looks like a fairly complex and convoluted process, where is my voice? How do I use my voice? Is there a little primer sheet that says, you know, you can join a citizens' budget committee or testify before the Bureau Budget Advisory Committee or whatever, get in here, you can lobby, you can reach out to the mayor on the proposed budget, there's a period of time in which you can go to the mayor and any member of council before they approve, and then, you know, get someone to champion your cause on the adopted. Is there sort of a citizen's guide to how to actually use your voice in each of these?
So we have some of those features that you just mentioned. On the timeline, you can see public engagement opportunities. Here are all the different, like, public hearings, public community forums, things like that, and then there's a link to the CBO's website that has a little bit more information, but we can certainly fill that a little bit more.
Yeah, so that there, so, you know, if you want to get involved, clicking on that, there is a page on the CBO website, but, you know, it's a great point, and figuring out different ways to highlight that for people as they come here. There are different places. We want to make it really easy for people to be involved. One of the things I do want to stress is, this is, I won't call it a beta, because I think we've been working on it for a while, but we are rolling it out this year and really looking for feedback, and so either feedback from your offices, feedback from bureaus, and feedback from the public. It is relatively easy to make tweaks and adjustments and changes to it, which is one of the benefits of this, and so we hope to improve it, you know, moving forward.
Great.
It's fantastic.
Great. Thanks. We wanted to show that, and again, we'll be monitoring, you know, how many people use it, right? What the, and advertising a little bit as well. And when we talk to community groups or other people, and, you know, we do get a lot of calls, and people ask questions, and directing into this and seeing if they're able to get the information they need, and then again, getting that feedback, what's the information that they're not able to get that we may be able to add to future versions of it. So with that overview, let me go into some of the specifics of the adopted budget, and we won't take a lot of time on this, because again, we've been through a whole process here, but what I want to highlight, it just, the changes, some of the major changes from the approved budget into the adopted budget. And you can see this in Attachment B of the ordinance, there's a change memo. The vast majority of things in this change memo are purely technical, and they're just adjustments to IA levels or technical changes that a bureau has made. We do list them, and again, we can take questions on any of those if you have them. But I just want to run through, really, it's just three or four items of note, and I know, and I wasn't over here, but I, because we were preparing for this, but I do believe you approved the business license tax increase. Is that correct? And we do note in here in the change memo, there was a slight adjustment, well, not slight, but there was an adjustment in terms of the amount of business license tax we'll be receiving in the first year from that, because of how tax years fall with fiscal years, and the assumptions in terms of when bureaus, when businesses will pay that new tax. However, we were fortunate that business license taxes are running high in this current year, and so we were able to make that, it's a technical zero adjustment, but I do want to call attention to that. Then, page four of the change memo, there are two OMF-related changes that, again, are not, they're not major, well, I want to highlight them for their decisions that you're going to be dealing with in the future, and revolving around Portland Building. And so there is a decision package in here for technology in the reconstructed Portland Building, and what the action does is, it draws about $2.7 million out of contingency, you know, making it available for this technology project. Council hasn't approved that yet moving forward, and so what OMF's plan is to draw about $258,000 of that while they work through these early steps. They'll be coming back to council during the latter half of 2018 to request both approval for and funding of the overall project, and they do not intend to spend any more of the $258,000 draw from contingency prior to that council approval, but they are moving those funds. We wanted to highlight that. There's a similar decision package for the development of an integrated print management system for copy and printed at the Portland Building, and again, that's listed in the change memo, but they would be drawing some funding out of contingency so that they can start that project, again, not planning to spend any more than $25,000 before they come back in the latter half of 2018 to get formal approval. But that is a change that I want to note, because council hasn't considered the full package to date, but again, OMF will be coming back on that, and I think they're here to answer any questions you might have. I did want to note, within the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, there is a change to add a program specialist position and redistribute just under $72,000 from neighborhood coalitions, other neighborhood coalitions to the East Portland Neighborhood Office, and then in addition, Commissioner Udaley is taking money out of her current year budget and transferring and carrying that money over to help fund some of those offices in next year's budget as well. And then I believe those were all of the substantive changes. Again, there's a number of other technical changes, and we're happy to answer questions about those, but given that this is what the adopted budget was filed, and now if there are any council amendments, now would be the time.
Very good. Colleagues, I have a number of amendments that I'd like to make, and I'm happy to have the Budget Office discuss any of these if you have follow-up questions. First, I'd like to offer a motion to increase funding for the Special Appropriations Competitive Grants Fund. This would increase the Special Appropriations budget by $350,000 in the Recreational Cannabis Fund resource for competitive grants. The funding source will be an increase in beginning fund balance resulting from underspending on those grants in the fiscal year 2017-18 year. This amends attachments B, C, and E as necessary.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Carla, could you call the roll?
Fish?
Actually, we should see if there's any testimony. Sorry, just a minute.
You're correct. That's absolutely right. I should have checked. Is there any public testimony on this amendment? Thanks, Director Scott. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The motion carries. Colleagues, I'd like to also offer up an amendment, a motion to increase position authority for the Portland Bureau of Transportation. This increases the position authority for the Portland Bureau of Transportation through the Transportation Operating Fund by 29 FTE. The funding source for these positions includes internal reallocations of existing appropriation and a reduction to bureau contingency of $289,554. The positions were approved by the council in the fiscal year 2017-18 spring supplemental budget, but were inadvertently excluded from the adopted budget change memo. This amends attachments B, C, and E as necessary.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussions, questions? Is there any public testimony on this amendment? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, motion to amend the Bureau of Development Services budget. This reallocates $58 million from unappropriated ending fund balance in the Development Services Fund of the Bureau of Development Services to contingency in order to facilitate an inter-fund loan with the Housing Capital Fund. This amendment does not result in an increase to either funds 2018-19 budget. This amends attachments B, C, and E as necessary.
I'll second it. Is there some reason that Commissioner in Charge isn't seconding it?
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I just...
He's throwing another $58 million your way. I just want to make sure.
No, 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 no.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, but just, we're looking to you as the commissioner.
Okay, well, we are happy to help, and to be clear, we'll be getting this money back, and it's money that I've learned I can't really spend on anything at all, so I'm glad that it can temporarily benefit the Housing Bureau.
Easy come, easy go.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this? Would anybody like to testify on this item? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number four, motion to amend Attachment D specifically to add a budget note regarding the Office of Community Technology. In accordance with the budget note in the fiscal year 2017-18 adopted budget, an external consultant was engaged to evaluate options and make recommendations to council on the optimal location and structure for the Office for Community Technology, OCT, within the city's organizational framework. Based on these recommendations and consultation with city staff, council directs that the Office for Community Technology be established as a standalone office beginning in September of 2018. The council directs the Revenue Division and OCT staff to bring forward budgetary and position changes in the fiscal year 2018-19 fall budget monitoring process for council consideration. Council further directs OMF facilities to develop options and plan for the physical relocation of OCT staff, with the relevant budgetary actions also brought forward during the fiscal year 2018-19 fall budget monitoring process.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion or questions? Would anyone like to testify on this item? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
I'm happy to see this move. I was, I've been curious why OCT was in revenue and would have been happy to host them in one of my bureaus, but regardless, I'm looking forward to getting to know them better and working with them on digital equity. Aye.
Fritz?
It's one of the best bits of news I've heard all week, and I'm very, very excited about it. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you doing this to make sure it happens. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The motion carries. That, Director Scott, concludes my amendments. Anybody else have any amendments?
Great. At this point, we take public testimony on the entire budget, if there is any, and then after that, council can move to a vote.
Very good. Public testimony.
No one signed up.
Very good. Any further discussion?
I just want to be, apologize for being slow on the draw with my second. I am so used to having to race to second every item with others on the council that I've just given up on seconding at all.
We were just looking to see if there's any creative tension between you and the mayor on this, as the Commissioner in Charge, so...
Oh, there's always creative tension between the mayor and I.
As well, there should be.
Yes.
There should be. Good. Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
We've had an opportunity to give statements about the budget prior to today, and I guess at the penultimate hearing, we already had a chance to make some statements on the record, so I'm going to be very brief. First, I want to say to the mayor, it is an accomplishment in our form of government to pass a budget with the concurrence of all of your colleagues, and I have served on this council when budgets have passed with less than five votes, and there's nothing in the charter that says you have to get five votes, but in my opinion, when a mayor goes the extra mile to meet as many of the priorities and values of his or her colleagues, we end up with a stronger document, and we end up with a better budget process. So I want to start with the mayor and thank him and his team for going the extra mile to get to the consensus that produced a 5-0 vote on the budget.
Thank you.
I think that's very important.
Thank you.
This budget balances a lot of competing demands. It reflects a lot of the council's shared values, and it includes a number, many, of the priorities that each of us as individual office holders have been working on. You know, I want to, in particular, just acknowledge how pleased I am that we're making progress on the Low Income Discount Program, which will be welcome news to cost-burden renters. A lot of people in the community and at the Water Bureau have been working on this issue for a long time. I want to compliment them for their perseverance. I'm grateful that we're continuing an innovative program launched by Venture Portland to build capacity in business districts, particularly in Outer East and North Portland. I am pleased that we're continuing to fund our partnership with Elders in Action. I am thrilled that we have put in record funding to address what I think is morally the most urgent issue of our time, which is homelessness, and the record funding for the joint office and for addressing other aspects of this crisis, I think this council should be very proud of. I'm pleased that we restored some cuts at the Parks Bureau, as a former Commissioner in Charge of the Parks Bureau, who used to see cuts, you know, taken out of parks to fund housing. I know that any cut to that bureau is, it causes heartburn, but I'm pleased that we softened the impact of some of those cuts, and I am, again, thought the process that brought the council together around the final budget was a positive one. And while we are raising the business license fee in this budget, an aspect of that that has not gotten, I think, enough attention is that we have finally honored a commitment that at least Dan and Commissioner Fritz and I made, I forget how many years ago, but I believe it was by either resolution or ordinance, that we made a commitment over time to raise the business owner's compensation deduction to $125,000. And I don't consider that a hard floor, or a ceiling, I should say, but it was a commitment we made, and I'm very pleased that we have had the opportunity to honor it. There are many other things in this budget that I like, and there are some things I don't like, but in the crafting of a budget, the name of the game is to balance a lot of different competing needs and reach consensus, and I, on balance, I think this is a good budget. This is the last budget that we will work with Andrew Scott on. He will be moving on to another job and will be giving us confidential information about the deliberations of Metro through a back channel, in the same way that Liam Frost has been so helpful in not having us understand what's going on in the chair's office. Andrew, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you over these years, and our relationship has survived the fact that on a regular and somewhat alarming basis, you have said negative things about my budget requests, and so I think it is a function of, but it is a function of the regard that you're held by your colleagues here, that when we create, you know, when we created this independent budget office, we knew that it was, it meant that you were going to call it the way you saw it, and that sometimes, frankly, caused heartburn in discussions you've had with us, but it's exactly what the system was designed to do, and you were the perfect person to deliver sometimes the bad news, not your assessment, of cherished things that we were trying to get in the budget. So thank you, and we wish you well in your next assignment, and the city has been very fortunate to have your service, so thank you very much. I want to thank on my team, my Chief of Staff, Sonia, Jamie Dumphy, I want to thank Todd, Amira, everybody in my office who's been working on the budget, and because in one way or another, everyone has touched this budget and been involved in helping to get to this moment, even if it includes communicating with constituents when we used to get emails or compiling documents or whatever, so everyone on my team, I want to say thank you. whatever. So everyone on my team, I want to say thank you. Um, uh, finally, um, I am very, uh, pleased that we have collectively made a commitment to thinking through in the next few months how we can engage the public more dynamically in the budget process. I think we've had for some time some frustration about trying to find that sweet spot of how we engage the public and, and act on what, uh, what they have to say, and, um, I think it's reached the point that we're actually looking at making some significant changes. That's not a criticism of anyone who has guided our budget process, uh, to this point. I think it's also recognition the world is changing, there's different ways of communicating, and how, how can, how can we engage the public in a more dynamic way? So what we're not hearing exclusively is what people don't want to see cut, but we're engaging people and actually crafting our priorities on our budgets, so I am very pleased that we'll be working on that, and, um, and I hope it changes the tenor and tone of some of our public meetings that we have, and when we engage the public a little differently and not just invite them to tell us what we shouldn't cut, but help us imagine how we, how we invest a limited pot of funds. So with all that said, again, thank you, uh, to everyone who has worked on this budget. Thank you to my colleagues. Um, I vote aye.
Saltzman.
Well, thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and all the council for the hard work, uh, we've all done in getting to this point, and I want to recognize the hard work of the Budget Office and all of our personal staffs as well, and, uh, want to wish Director Scott the best of luck, and as Deputy COO at Metro. It'd be a, it's a dynamic place to be, and I'm sure you'll enjoy it, and I'm sure you'll bring, uh, a lot of good insights that you've gained here, uh, over your tenure as, as Budget Director, uh, that will serve Metro well, under their new leadership as well. So I, I, I do think this, uh, this is also my last budget, so I just wanted to, uh, take the opportunity to, uh, sort of echo, uh, the observation Commissioner Fish just made, is I, I do hope we figure out a better way to, to do our budget processes, because it does only bring out, and maybe there's nothing, nothing you can ever do about it to change that, but our budget processes only attract people that don't want to cut their programs. They don't, our public doesn't really want to engage in many of these broader discussions that we like to have at the lofty level of goals and visions and opportunities. Uh, instead, they're responding to an email alert they get from somebody within a bureau or somebody on a budget advisory committee that says, you know, we're going to cut, everybody's been asked to cut five percent, you know, you know what that means. You know, we're going to get all these dynamics, and we see as a result the same constituencies at virtually every budget I've been through in, in almost twenty years of, of doing this. So we've got to figure out a fresher, more relevant approach to engage our people and, uh, to gauge our residents, and, um, and to structure our hearings differently. And, you know, one thing I told our, our, Bill Farver, the mayor's consultant on this process of how to refresh our budget process, is maybe we need to look at the way the county does it, which is they hold their public hearings after the chair has put forward a proposed budget. Uh, in this case, it would be the mayor putting forward a proposed budget, uh, because then people really know whether they have to worry or not. Right now, people, they're reacting, as I said, they get an email alert, they think instinctively, I've got to show up, you know, wear my red shirt, whatever, and, uh, and be against a cut. That's all they know, and that's all they come to say. But if they know, if you have a proposed budget, a proposed budget, I would argue is probably, you know, ninety-nine percent what the actual budget ends up being, then they know whether they really have to worry or not. And I think that's a better dynamic, uh, to engage our, our, our residents on. So I do hope that's a change, uh, this council will consider making, and you, Mayor, will consider making that as too, is, is have the public hearings after a proposed budget. It'll make a lot more sense, I believe. And, uh, and I do hope that we will revisit the financial policies I would like to have this body adopt, uh, that would also bring more transparency to how we conduct our bump processes and more accountability on our parts about how we spend major sources of general fund revenue, and that we do it as part of our budget process. We don't do it as part of our bump processes where nobody does what the bump is. Nobody ever, we have no public involvement on decisions regarding our bump. We have no budget committees, nobody looking at it. So I think we've got to bring that stuff in the light of day, and it'll foster, I believe, a better decision-making environment and a better ability to weigh the trade-off we're making. So I haven't given up on those. I was hoping maybe to have them done by your last day here, Andrew, but, uh, you know, keep watching. I hope to get that done in the next few weeks. So again, thanks to everybody. I'm pleased to vote aye.
Udaly.
Uh, well, this year's budget process was certainly more challenging than last year's and, um, but also more satisfying. I realize now that's because the mayor and I came in about halfway through the budget process, which is basically a year-round event. Um, it's maybe the most important part of our job, setting this budget, balancing needs with wants, current needs with, with future needs, and, uh, setting our, expressing our values and setting our priorities for the city. Um, I think, as most of you know, I certainly, uh, didn't get everything that I hoped to get, and, and I compromised on things that I felt strongly about, but I remain cautiously optimistic that our increase in the police budget is going to result in a decrease in response time, as well as a decrease in reliance on overtime in the next eighteen months to two years, so I'll be watching that closely. I'm very pleased we increased our commitment to keeping people in their housing through eviction prevention, as well as providing more shelter to people experiencing homelessness. We're one, I think we're the only West Coast city that saw a decrease in homeless individuals on the street, not homeless overall, but on the street, which is, um, something, something to be proud of. Um, we were able to soften the blow to our neighborhood coalitions in our redistribution of coalition funds to bring, uh, equity to EPNO. I appreciate that. Um, and finally, probably the most meaningful thing to me was that we fully funded our portion of the Universal Defense Project to help protect immigrants and refugees from unjust removal and deportation. And I would just like to share with you all today, um, a victory that all sink, for all sanctuary cities, in that the city of Phil- Philadelphia obtained a decision in the city's favor against the Justice Department on its unconstitutional efforts to require cities to adhere to its demands to renounce their sanctuary policies towards immigrants. The court concluded that section thirteen seventy-three amounted to commandeering under the Murphy versus NCAA decision, and that DOJ violated the Administrative Procedures Act in its efforts to amend policy by fiat. The court essentially found for the city on all its claims, and the city of Portland has been supporting Philadelphia's litigation efforts. So this is a controversial issue, and I've certainly faced my fair share of criticism for standing up for our, uh, immigrant and refugee community members, and, uh, that decision just strengthens my, only strengthens my resolve. I'm also looking forward to changes coming in our, uh, budget process, especially around public engagement. I think this year's experience was frustrating for everyone involved, and I believe the public wants to participate in a more meaningful way, but we have to do a better job giving them adequate tools and, uh, and with communication. So thank you to the mayor and my colleagues. Thank you to Andrew Scott and the Budget Office. We're going to be saying goodbye to Andrew later today, and I heard there'll be a dunk tank, which even I feel like is a little bit mean to do to Andrew.
Nah.
I will not, I will not be in the dunk tank, just in case anyone's grabbing their keys and rushing down to City Hall. Um, I want to thank, uh, my staff, especially my Chief of Staff Marshall, my policy team, Jamie Duhamel, Winter, Winter Johannes, and Pollyann Burge, and most of all, I want to thank the community members who weighed in on the budget through written, uh, or, um, oral testimony, uh, or, you know, stalking me on Facebook. Uh, duly noted, and, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to better engagement next year. Aye.
Fritz.
I'm going to start by thanking Andrew Scott. Your leadership of the City Budget Office, the independent City Budget Office, uh, taking it from a fledgling to a soaring success has been absolutely outstanding, and I think you have, I know that you have shown, there is no question that the independent City Budget Office is needed, and, uh, have begun to show exactly what it can do. This latest dashboard, I think, is another example of that, and you have expanded it beyond just the budget period, but throughout the year, looking at performance management and how can we do better, and you have paid attention to equity in every way, um, that I have been hoping and have, uh, set us on the way of that, so thank you very much for your leadership. Um, I gave a long speech in May when we approved the budget, so I won't repeat what I said then. Um, I do keep hearing about how the budget pro- process was, uh, broken this year, and I don't share that perspective. The independent City Budget Office did fantastic work reviewing the budget submittees, submissions, the Bureau budget submissions, and making recommendations on how we could balance the budget. Even when I disagree with those recommendations, I greatly value their insights and analysis. The budget forums may not be fun. They are a necessary part of the budget process. There must be opportunities for the public to weigh in on the budget decisions we are making. While contra dancing may sound like a trivial pursuit to some people, to seniors who build their week around it and find companionship and great joy in participating, it is a big deal, and they need to be heard. This is true of every budget decision we make. There is a constituency, and we need to hear their concerns. And then there is the council action on the mayor's proposed budget. We have a responsibility in our legislative roles to review the proposal and negotiate changes, and that's why I disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Saltzman. I don't think that having the budget, the hearings after the proposed budget, um, is, is, um, the right way to go about it. Um, so the, the involvement has, of council has happened in every budget that I've participated in over the last ten years, and it could, should continue to happen. So when I keep hearing about the broken budget process, I, I don't buy it. I look forward to hearing the recommendations of the consultant reviewing our budget process. If those recommendations diminish the role of the City Budget Office, if they limit the opportunity for public input, if they give more power and authority to the Office of Management and Finance, if they undermine the responsibility of the four commissioners to help shape the final budget, and try to make the city budget process more like a, a so-called strong executive system, which we are not, I will strenuously oppose those changes, and I hope others will join me. Even in the so-called strong mayor-city manager form of government, all elected officials have power in the budget process, and I know that Mayor Wheeler respects that, and that's how it needs to continue to be. Yesterday, the mayor called for the bureaus to work more collaboratively to make the city function better. That will only happen if the council is also working together collaboratively. This budget process was a good example of council working together collaboratively, including the second floor as full partners, and I hope we can, can build off this good output. Uh, thanks in particular to Tim Creil and my staff for all of your work throughout the ten years that I've been here, and all of my staff also, and I, I associate myself with Commissioner Fish's comments. So clearly the, the, one of the key questions moving forward is, is the Parks Bureau, and it needs to be said that one of the reasons Park has been challenged in recent budgets is that the city is finally starting to pay many of the Park staff at rates closer to living wages, and I am proud of that, and we need, we should not be saying that just because we're paying you fifteen dollars an hour, you no longer have a job because we can't afford you. The services are services that people need. I'm very glad that we funded the long-range plan and the fiscal sustainability plans in this current budget, and I will begin talking about, uh, with folks over the summer, uh, what, what can be funded, and what, what cuts do we need to make for the ongoing financial sustainability, and that's how it should happen. It should happen outside of the budget process and not within it, or as well as within it. I hope to guide that process. Whether or not I'm the Commissioner in charge, I will always support Parks. I did before I was elected. I did before I was assigned to be Commissioner in charge, and I have for the past five budgets, I will continue to vote to support Parks funding for my remainder of my time in office. Parks and community engagement make Portland special. Funding them is necessary. It's important as well as public safety, housing, transportation utilities, and the other things that we do. Everything is important to somebody. Parks are important to almost everyone, and I believe that we need to respect that and, um, continue to figure out what services Portlanders want to buy and how we want to pay for them. That's the discussion that we need to have over the next several months. Aye.
Wheeler.
Well, first of all, uh, you know, I'll, I'll take this opportunity to thank a lot of people. Um, I spent a lot of time reflecting on what it means to be mayor, what it means to be entrusted with, uh, this privilege of serving in this capacity, and it's actually really exciting to be able to, um, be engaged in a process like this where you really can make a difference in addressing and reflecting the needs of the community. And we couldn't do that work without the community's active engagement and participation in this process, and so I first and foremost want to thank everybody in the community who took the time to be engaged regardless of what side they were on on any particular budget issue or item. Um, yeah, a few days after a California election, which only drew thirteen percent of the total population, in a state where, like Oregon, they make it super easy to vote, demonstrates to me that there's a lot of skepticism and apathy about, uh, perhaps in the relationship between government and the people that government is supposed to be serving. And so I want to thank everybody, uh, who was not apathetic. People, in fact, who are very passionate and, uh, in many ways emphatic about, uh, their engagement in this process, I want to thank you. Uh, second of all, I want to thank my colleagues. I want to assure the public that we don't always agree, and as I, Commissioner Udaly and I had sort of a fun back and forth yesterday, and we, we, you know, both stated that it's actually really important that we not agree on everything, and that we have open discussions and dialogues about differences of opinion on policy or difference of opinion on, uh, solutions, or even difference of opinion on priorities. And, uh, you know, I, I can tell the public, even when we're meeting, uh, personally behind closed doors, there's a lot of differences and nuances and ideas that get exchanged throughout this process, and I can tell you that the final product here, uh, changed from the initial proposed budget. And I want to be very clear with my colleagues, you strengthened this budget. Your participation and your engagement and, uh, the, the engagement of your teams and your staffs made it a better product, and that's really important to me that we had that level of engagement, and I personally, I want to thank each and every one of you, uh, for that opportunity. Uh, the budget team, it goes without saying, you guys are rock stars. Uh, Andrew, we are going to miss you, and I've said this, I think, three times, and you keep showing up again.
You can't give up.
But I, I, I think we stop paying you effective tomorrow, so, um, I probably won't have too many more opportunities. This is your last budget. You've been here a lot longer than I have in this position, uh, and I hope that you hear the respect being expressed, uh, both by myself and my colleagues. Claudio, you're, you're stepping in, um, as the interim, and we're very, very appreciative of that. We know that you'll continue the good work, and, um, I want to thank the hard work of the budget team, and I, I want to thank you all personally for the many, many, many hours you spent with me. That could not have been fun, but I hope you at least found it meaningful, if not fun. To the department heads, bureau heads, there's a number who are here today. I'm actually gratified to see you here today. You don't really have to be here today. This is a bit, uh, pro forma when we get to the final, final vote, but the fact that you're here, I think, demonstrates, uh, an interest and a commitment in the overall enterprise, and I want to thank you and your leadership teams for coming in and sharing your thoughts and your ideas, and frankly, your candid criticism of some of the early proposals that were put on the table. Uh, in many cases, you were able to provide very, very compelling arguments or provide a different approach that got us to the same solution by doing something smarter or better or in a more innovative or a more cost-effective way, and that's super important. Uh, definitely want to thank my team. Uh, I, I just had an A-plus team working on this, and I, I'm glad to see, you know, I don't know if anybody's left in my office. It seems like they all came down here, which is great. Um, I think each and every one of my team were in some way invested in this budget process, and I want to thank all of you. I particularly want to acknowledge Kristin Dennis, uh, who, uh, even with a lot going on in her life, exciting stuff, being a new mom and everything else, uh, she committed to this budget process with, uh, resolve and tenacity. Uh, and Maurice Henderson, my Chief of Staff, uh, the other guy who's leaving that I'm sorry to see go, but, uh, like Director Scott, uh, to see go, but like Director Scott, is going on to bigger and to better. And I'll say this about you, Director Scott, we don't want people who other people don't want. And so, the fact that both of you are going off to higher responsibilities in the community, that's a win for all of us, and it will strengthen the relationships, and as Commissioner Fish said, that gives us some spies in important places, and we most definitely need that. I'm just going to jump to the end and say thank you to everybody in this room right now had something to do with it, everybody watching on TV had something to do with it, everybody in the community had something to do with it. It's another step along the path to making our city a better place for everybody. I vote aye. The budget's adopted. Now for the fun part.
Yes, one more ordinance before you, the levy taxes. And again, this action includes the levy amount for property taxes accruing to the general fund, the Children's Investment Fund, and the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund, and it also includes property tax levies for general obligation, bonded debt, and 16 urban renewal areas.
Very good. So, again, this is an ordinance. Is there any public testimony on this item? Is there any further question on the part of the council? Carla, would you please call the roll?
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Well, I just wanted to thank this opportunity, take this opportunity, excuse me, to thank Portland voters for the fact that there is a line item in this budget, and there will be for the next five years, for the Children's Investment Fund, which we all know as the Portland Children's Levy, which was renewed by 83% of Portland voters on May 15th to keep it going for another five years. So, and it's going to be the same amount that you're paying right now, 40 cents per thousand of assessed value for the next five years beyond this year's budget, too. So, I just want to say thank you, Portland voters. Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz.
When I ran for office in 2008, and then again in '12 and '16, I promised to look out for basic services, for education and jobs, and to spend taxpayers' money wisely. And that's what this budget does, and that's what I think about every day that I'm in office, is that taxes pay for services, and it's our responsibility to spend these taxes as wisely as possible, listening to the community and deciding how to do that. So, thanks to everybody for paying all your taxes, fees, and other things that help provide the money to provide these services. Aye.
Wheeler.
So, I'll just echo my colleagues on this. Nobody likes taxes. It's always sort of a downer to have to vote on this last. I always felt like maybe we should move this first. But I hope as the public that we represent evaluates this budget, and I hope they do use the cool budget tool that you outlined earlier, they will see that the priorities that are funded in this budget, I believe, are highly consistent with the priorities of the people who live in this community, who pay the bills around here. We focused on the homeless issue, we focused on livability issues, we focused on affordable housing issues, we focused on public safety issues, we focused on the parks and critical transportation infrastructure. I believe we focused on the things that the people in this community expect us to focus on. In fact, I have a great deal of confidence that that's the case. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, and we're adjourned.